I just got it today.
All right, six o'clock. Start the regular Port Valon meeting. Start with pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So those of you in the public that didn't know that Commissioner Farmer has officially resigned, her and Tom sold their business and moved out of the district, so she's no longer going to be serving as a commissioner. So with that, we have an opening that Larry had suggested that somebody in the local community that's been well-involved would do a good job. Mentioned Mr. Griffey here, and so now we want to talk about appointing Mr. Dell Griffey, and publicly Judy and I need to discuss it, and what do you think about appointing Mr. Griffey as Gene's replacement?
I think that'd be excellent, being that he used to be port commissioner for 24 years. That means he knows the program, he's involved with the community, and as an interim, he was, I think, willing to do that.
When Larry had suggested you, I had already in my mind thought that you would be a good person as well, you know? You kind of built this place, and yeah, so I'd be willing to take any comments from the public with appointing Mr. Griffey, because I would like to do that as a matter of business right away.
The only question I have is when would her term have ended?
Well, she had officially-
Is she running for election?
No, she was not going to rerun, so the discussion was, should we appoint one of the people that are going to run for her position? And the thought was that we'd give them an unfair advantage over the others, so we would not do that, and Dell's name had come up, so I agree. Jeff, yep? Okay, so as a matter of official business, Larry, help me out here. We-
I think maybe you should ask Mr. Griffey if he'd like to accept.
Well, do we need, okay, Mr. Griffey, would you-
I'll accept.
You'll honor us with filling in-
Then we need a motion.
Okay, then we would need a motion.
Okay, Chair, I commission, I make a motion that we accept Dell Griffey as a port commissioner as an interim.
Till December 31st of 2017. I would second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, and then you have the swearing in. The swearing in is on the bottom there.
Okay, Mr. Griffey, would you come up? See, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Delmar G. Griffey.
Delmar G. Griffey.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I am a citizen of the United States and State of Washington, that I am legally qualified to assume the office of port commissioner, that I will support the Constitution and law of the United States and the State of Washington, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties of this office to the best of my ability. Thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dell.
Signature from Mr. Griffey, and a signature from me. Oh. Oh, genes.
No hard time writing.
Me too. Well, have a seat, Mr. Griffey. Thank you. All right. And-
Been a few years.
How's it feel?
Yeah.
It's still hot?
Thank you for volunteering, Dell.
Then we're going to go on to our regular agenda here. Find it. There it is. So item number three, consent items. All matters listed under consent items have been distributed to each member of the commission for reading and study. They are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the commission with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, the item may be removed from the consent item and placed under the action item by request. Does anybody request to remove consent items under the action items?
No, Commissioner, I move that we accept items, well, the minutes, special meeting July 5th, and the financial reports as submitted.
Thank you.
I read them all and found nothing going. I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I have action items A, B, and C. I would entertain a motion to approve those payments.
Commissioner, I move that we accept general fund vouchers for $9,012.06 and payroll vouchers for $16,041.94, water fund vouchers for $250.50, and I move that we accept them as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion has been made with a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we have here a presentation by Pat McCullough.
He said he was going to be here, I don't see him in the audience, so.
Let's skip over to number five on our agenda, commissioner reports.
I'm sure I have a real quick one. Hopefully you do too, huh?
I do have a quick one.
Of course, I did the port meeting July 5th. July 11th was Oyster House meeting, mostly we got the details to do Allen Days. Kat Ross and Mark Wodowich manned the Allen Days booth, and we had a fundraiser selling our Sergeant Oyster House label wine, and it was quite successful, we sold almost all of them, which was great. Not all the monies, all the funds go towards the Oyster House. And then July 23rd, 25th, of course, I went to the Washington Public Ports Commission Conference at Alderbrook, and it learned a lot, there were a few takeaways that I got from that. One thing was that Port Anacortes has party floats that they rent, which increase the mortgage usage, and then they also get money from these floats. They're covered, they have a grill on them, and then people come and can gather and all that, so that was really good. And then on the 24th, I came back home and went to the North Mason Community Voice, and Pastor Joaquin Miguel was the speaker, and Pastor Joaquin is the pastor for the Living Water Church that started at the Balfour Cafe, and they have, now they have the new church on North Shore. Matter of fact, you did an article, which is awesome. It was just great, I was so pleased with how everybody accepted and reached out to him and was willing to help and gain understanding in regard to him and his congregation. And most of them are Guatemalans, there's a few Mexican congregation people, but they have about 500, like I said.
It's a big church.
It is. And then, of course, I'm going to go, August 12th, I'm going to go to the Taste of Hood Canal and the Oyster House, and-
Come on in.
And then I think another item, but maybe I can save this, about the Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization. I'll just wait on that, I'll bring that up later. There we go.
Pat, we moved past our years, and we're just doing commissioner reports, and we're going to move right back to you. So I'm going to, I have a short one, because although I had a busy month, it had not a lot to do with the port, so. I did go to the July 5th regular meeting, I did go to the port conference, so thank you again, public, for allowing me to go to those, those are quite informative, and it was right here in, at Alderbrook, so every time I fill out a form that says, "What can we do to enhance the conferences of the port?", I always say, "I have them at Alderbrook", so.
Good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, good job.
It's, I mean, those of us that live here, we know it's a great, great venue there, a beautiful spot on the Hood Canal, and I did learn things too, though.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, we learned about how to deal with contentious meetings. There was a conference, one of the meetings was called, you know, "How to Direct Your Port Commissioner", or "Your Port Director", which was, was good for me, because I always say, "My job is not to do his job", so it's good to be reminded of that once in a while, so I don't jump out and do his job for him. But yeah, that was interesting. I did not make it to the EDC, although I did send off the agenda and reports from them. And that was what I had, and those of you just joining, our newest commissioner, Mr. Dell Griffey, was just appointed and sworn in about five minutes ago, so I'm going to guess that he doesn't have a report for this month, so.
No. Other than just coming up here, I can report on that.
That's, that's great. So with that, we will go back to item number four on the agenda, and that's a presentation by Pat McCullough on Trail System.
Why, first one you did.
Well, you're actually number four.
I didn't want to make you sit through the whole meeting.
Yeah, yeah, if you could go to the podium, we have these, these live fed, and one each.
Nice, big one, that's great.
Yeah, I'll give you a big one.
That's great, thank you.
I'll take a big one, too, Pat.
Yeah.
All right.
William?
Yes, please, thank you.
Oh, can you hand me the vouchers?
Yes.
Larry, can you hand me the vouchers?
Take care of some business here.
Let me give you one.
Pass those down.
Are you related to Ron?
Yes. No, he's my nephew.
Ron and I have done about 50 projects together.
Oh, yeah?
He's a nice guy.
Sure is. Darkened contract.
Well, okay, just to start out, I, for the last 15 years, I've been in the process of working with the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group, Balfour State Parks, and the Great Peninsula Conservancy to restore the estuaries in Lower Hood Canal, Balfour State Park, Klingel, Balfar, Beards Cove, and Union River. During that time, all my time out there standing in the estuaries, I thought, man, wouldn't it be wonderful if more people could come out and see this? It's gorgeous. We, Bonnie and I own Sealy Inn, if you're familiar with it. I, just went swimming before I came, and the water's about 85 degrees, top six inches, which is really too warm, but pretty doggone nice. Wouldn't it be wonderful if we could figure out some way to get from, in fact, where Beck Road intersects SR 300 all the way down to Theller and Balfour, without getting killed? If you've walked that, you know that pavement is 26 feet wide, of which 22 feet is amply taken up by trucks and cars. I remember in Beards Cove, when we first moved out to the canal in 1979, you could literally play football on North Shore Road. And, you know, you'd have to move every once in a while for the cars, but other than that, it wasn't too bad. It's just amazing to me now, when just trying to get across the road at Beards Cove, which we finished a year ago, from one side of the road to the other is just almost impossible. Very dangerous. So at any rate, what I've decided to do is take on the task of trying to come up with a project that will connect Balfour State Park and Beck Road area to Balfour with a 10-foot-wide paved trail. I've been working on this now for the last two months, actually, but working on it for the last year and a half. Hood Canal came, Salmon Enhancement Group came to me, and Brian Peterson and the gang, and asked us to, asked me to take a look at a trail all the way from Balfour State Park to Allen, which I've given you a copy of the, one of the proposed routes in the drawings. We did, we didn't do any cost, but what they did do is took that, which surprised me, they took it and got it on the tip, Transportation Improvement Plan, so believe it or not, we do have some basis for starting. I really, Krieger wanted to do the Balfour section first, because he owns most of the land. He was really excited about that, Waterfall Park. I didn't want to do that section. I think the most beneficial section to the community would be from Balfour State Park to Theller. Several, several things. First of all, it's a perfect 5K one-way. You can take the bus back, or you can rent a 10K if you go back. So it's a perfect 10K route. We put in the Balfour loop, and we get over to Allen, now we're talking up to 25K. The whole Theller Center complex, Pacific Northwest Salmon Center, is absolutely wonderful. We have people coming to the end at all times, and I send them down there, and they just come back raving about the trail and the environment and everything else. Really, for Balfour, our environment is our asset. That really is where our value is. So, it's not like I'm making a speech, I didn't plan this, so.
You did.
At any rate, we have economic development, we've got conditioning, that's one thing we know about Balfour, we need a lot of conditioning.
Agreed.
Third, we have environmental, you know, viewing and appreciation and bird watching, and all the other things that happen when you get out in the estuaries. And I'm amazed, I've always been amazed in these projects that I work on, how many people there are statewide who go bird watching. It's just incredible to me. Doesn't turn me on particularly, I mean, I like birds. And the other thing is, of course, the, you know, the educational component of it, to have some way for the kids to get out and, you know, and see our estuaries and see our coastline. It just would be a wonderful thing. So anyway, what I make this, end this, what I did is came up with a conceptual design for that trail. I have walked most of it. It starts out at Beck Road, goes through State Park, we have a trail system at the State Park. Not all of that trail system probably can be used for bikes, but I think we can work that out, because once you get to the parking lot in Balfour State Park, you can get through the park on the roads with bikes. 125-foot-long bridge crosses Mission Creek, which actually would be really nice. When we built Mission Creek, we put a bunch of logs in to create pools for fish. And what's really fun is to see the little kids swim in. They just love that, those pools, right there where Mission Creek comes into the estuary. But this bridge would be a good place for the moms to sit up and watch them all swim. Then you go on to Gladwin Road, and what I proposed on Gladwin is we pave, it's 18, right now, the travelway in Gladwin's 18 feet wide. If we put the, if we structure the drainage on the uphill side, we can widen it another five or six feet and stripe a parking, a walking lane down, down the water side of Gladwin. Bikes don't need a walk, a lane, they've got, Gladwin, there's hardly any cars at all on Gladwin nowadays. Then when you get up to the Red Barn, you go along the edge of the road on a 10-foot-wide paved strip, there's room there to do that. Then you drop down on Great Peninsula Conservancy's property, which I already talked to them, they're in, as far as I know. And then we go down about 1,200 feet on an existing dike that we built as a trail, setback dike as part of the Klingel project, with a plan in mind, by the way. That really all has to be done there is pave. Then from there, we get into the rough, rough stuff. We got to go down along the edge of the road, we have some big distributor channels come in right in that area, and we have to go on a concrete boardwalk. I planned about a 600-feet, I think. We get more detail, I'm hoping we reduce this length, but 600 feet of concrete boardwalk. And that section there, I planned with railings. Railings add about another 100 bucks per foot. Till we get down to almost the Beards Cove property, and then instead of going across the Beards Cove property, we go in front of it, between the gate and the road, because we don't want to get into a big issue with the Beards Cove Community Club, because it'll, trust me, they're really nice people, but it'll be messy. So then we go back on GPC property, and from there on, we go across another 125-foot-long bridge, across the, an estuary wetland, and then we go out down around Fat Beard Cove, I mean, Fat Beard's Farm, believe it or not, that's what they call it. Heard of it. And we wind up over on SR 300, about where Beards Cove starts, and Beards Curve starts. Then we go down along the side of the road on structure, on a wetland boardwalk above the water, about two feet, no railing there, we can just set it up less than two feet above. For 1,000 feet, and then we go into 900, 650-foot, 566-foot-long bridge across the Union River. Now, there are other alternatives to cross the Union River, but that is, I think, the most practical solution. We just finished a bridge just like it, I did, down on the Dungeon S on the Olympic Discovery Trail, that was 750 feet long, that's really a beautiful structure. So these are 186-foot spans, three of them to get across the river, ties directly into the Theller Trail System. So the plan works, now, what do we have to do? Well, the first thing is, I, we need a sponsor for the project, one. Two, then we need to take and get together with the landlords, make presentations. If you take it on as a sponsor, Larry and I need to get together with the landowner and talk to him about the alignment. I've already sent it off to a lot of the people that I know, Dor Small and Coleman of GPC and some clients of mine. Talk about the alignment, talk about the project, talk to the county about it. The commissioner indicated that, and I said, "Look, a perfect match on this project would be for you to take on the roadway section." Forgot the name of it, Judy, help me.
What's the 300?
No, the, I always forget the name of, Gladwin Road. Comes with age. Anyway, take on the Gladwin Road section to overlay it. And I haven't got any promises or anything, but they do have some REIT money that we need about 400 grand to do that, and that's just a perfect match. So the county may be in on that, of course, it has to go through the whole process, so I don't, I don't know, whether or not they could, so don't put it in the paper if you're from the paper. You'll get in trouble. None of this has been sanitized yet. So anyway, there's that prospect as a match. The next thing we have to do after we get everybody on board is, and discuss the project with them, is we have about five or six different grant agencies, and a lot of them are only 50%, so we had to put two grant agencies together to fund the thing 100%. And we've got, to get started in the budget I gave you, there's about a $95,000 preliminary engineering and permitting stage to begin with. And what I would propose there is going to economic development and see if we can get some help. Now, this is ultimately a project of this scope, which is over $5 million. We're going to have to probably get the ledge involved, legislature involved, and probably wash it off. So this is going to be an interesting track if we take this on together. Then, once we start getting funding agencies interested and lined up, and it's a matter of selling the project moving forward. As far as I know, the school district will be in strong support. I talked to John about it, they're excited about the idea. The port, I mean, the Chamber of Commerce, I've talked to them about it, you know, they board meetings are in. They're real excited about it. So it has a lot of, I think, community support. That community support has to be developed, and people have to be educated about what's planning, and everybody will probably gasp at the price, but if you're going to do it right, we're going over wetlands, we just have to do it right, that's the only way we can do it. And the worst thing we want to do is go into it with a bogus cost estimate that everybody thinks, then come back and double it. It doesn't work. So at any rate, what I'm here tonight for is to see, in my opinion, it's a perfect project for the Port of Allen. And I'm here tonight to see if you folks are interested in being project sponsor. Initially, most of my work up to the tune of about 30,000 bucks is donated. The one thing that I don't know about, though, and we have one of the best writers in the state sitting right here, and we have some grants to put together. And I think it's right there. But we may need four or five grand to get Kathleen Barantus and some professional people involved in grant writing. Larry, I know, has worked a lot with Kathleen, but it's, it'll be, it'll be a substantial effort. It's, I'm not here to tell you that it's, we're going to be able to lock in and get people to fund the whole thing right away. I've been doing these kind of projects for, I don't know, 50 years now, and the only project that I planned that didn't go through was the one in Gorst.
Was that a bridge across the water?
Well, the one road that cuts over Christopherson Way, they took that idea and used that. But I had a whole interchange there. State just flipped out when I showed them my interchange. We'd have had a regional mall there if they'd have gone my way, but they didn't. But at any rate, I'm very optimistic that this project will happen. Whether it happens in the next two years, maybe not, but it's going to happen. The state is really up against it trying to get any kind of bicycle and pedestrian access from Balfour to Balfour State Park, and that's a state route. So I think we've got a lot of potential for funding, but if the port, if you decide to be the sponsor, just recognize the fact that we're going to be talking about this for a few years.
Sure.
Any questions?
I have a couple, and one is, if you consider the public safety aspect of it, I mean, people are getting, getting hit on that road, I wouldn't say regularly, but enough, and if that gets put into the presentation, that it gets people off the shoulder of Highway 300 and kind of puts them off into a safe walking area, a safe bicycling area. I live on the North Shore, so I, I see the bicycles, and I've got to take those curves and get on the side, the center line to get around them. There's people walk on the tall grass, I'm coming around the corner, and I know that somebody's coming right at me, so I kind of get over to the side a little bit, and there's somebody walking, and we have a couple memorials in that general area for people that have been killed there. I'm also on the homeowners architectural committee for Lynch Cove, so I do have a little bit of influence for that-
On Gladwin?
Gladwin Beach Road. It's not, it's just a portion of it, and it's not a lot of it, but there's a portion of it there. I do know of one person that would probably fight it, just because, I mean, just because it's people coming by his house. And my experience is with trail systems, what people don't like about it is, if it's in a residential area, is people just walking through their neighborhood by their house, so. And I'm sure you've dealt with that many times, but-
Well, you know, privacy and fencing is, can be put in the project.
Yeah, and it's just, so just the part of Gladwin Beach would be the only part of the whole trail system that would actually be through the neighborhood, right?
Yeah, well, back to our Beck Road, but-
And Beck Road, yeah.
Yeah. How can people be upset about people walking down the highway?
They don't own the road, I understand that. And then the other part was, I just, I think I know what you, what you said, and I think I realize what it is in, in the plan, but so basically, you go across the Union River, and then you cut across behind all the commercial to attach to the Theller. There's a boardwalk that already comes out a little ways, but it attaches to that.
Well, there's trails in Theller, and the bicycles would go straight ahead down to-
To the four-way and-
To Red Hill.
Rozell.
Rozell Road, yeah.
Yeah.
Run a Rozell Road and go down Rozell and down the road. The walkers can go down the track, or either way.
And it's on the other side of the Union River.
And as you can see, the proposal is, in talking to- And as you can see, the proposal is, in talking to Rick, we're gonna carry the trail up through his property up to the new 11,000 feet of sidewalks in Belfair. And Judy's got a trail planned across her property, and Rich Eager's got a section across his property I think he's okay with. That gets us almost to Belfair Street.
Yeah, down to Belfair.
We have, we have a couple of, and I've talked to, Don Cady thinks that we can get from the end of Rich's property up to Belfair Street. He's gonna help out, so. So, I think, I think by the time we get done, we'll have a really wonderful system that anybody in Belfair can get down the system and get, you know, and bike down to Belfair State Park.
I think it's a great idea. I actually, I hear people talk about the public safety aspect, and I knew that this was conceptually being talked about and try to get people to rally behind it. Whether or not we can be the sponsor, I don't think today's the day we can decide that.
Sure.
We'll have to get together and discuss it at length, and then I'd like to get some public input. We'll advertise a meeting that, that we're gonna, we're gonna discuss it publicly and see what our constituents have to say, and, yeah.
In terms of time scale, just to add some salt to the meat here, we'd like to apply for grants by the end of September.
Okay.
At least the initial planning grant to probably economic development would be the logical place to go.
I'm on that board.
Huh?
I'm on that board.
Oh, are you?
And Randy's on that board, so...
Great. Yeah, all right. We'd like to get an application in, and then I'd like to, if Larry and I team up, I'd like to start talking to Tim and some of the legislative people about, you know, this big dollar project, so we may have to get into the capital budget, I'm not sure.
Do you expect any opposition?
Oh!
I mean, any big opposition?
Belfair?
Yeah.
What do you think?
No, I mean, do you know of any?
Huh?
Do you know of any already?
Well, I can pump up a few names right now that are against everything. But, sorry, I don't wanna be facetious, but, 'cause don't write any of that down, by the way.
Well, the Water Wheel Park, for example, was a project that we got behind, and there was, there was a lot of opposition to it, which was kinda surprising to me, because I've only lived here for seven years and only worked here for 16, so...
When I was doing the EIS for the Union River restoration, okay, I answered the same questions at least five times during that project from the same individual. You know, now, you've all been down there and seen how wonderful all that is, you know? I don't know, but anyway. Somebody, you know, I think what's really important is that we, like you said, that we, we make this as public as possible. And one of the things that we really do need to do is try to identify with GPS the alignment that proposed, especially across Fat Beard's Farm.
Right.
Interesting name. So, the DFW and us can go out and walk it. I'm sure that Doris and the people who own the land are gonna wanna move it around a little bit. The primary criteria through there is to keep the state at elevation 14, NBD 88, which is elevation 17, meaning low water, which is about a foot and a half above the extreme high water in that area. And so, that's what we designed the Klingel Trail at. And we wanna stay above, and we got global warming coming and all the rest of it, so... That's, it's critical, and it's not easy to do along there, because an awful lot of that is, here you get down into wetlands and stuff, and we wanna stay away from that as much as possible. Yet, what we're trying to do is create a view, viewscape, so it's gonna be a little bit interesting to see exactly where we wind up. But it seems to work, you know? The trail part's easy. The tough part, of course, are the structures. They're expensive. And if you wanna see something, I put pictures of the structures that I'm proposing there. The one we finished down on the Olympic Discovery Trail was really neat. We put Indian art in it using laser cut on steel, and it's just beautiful, you know, they're really wonderful. You can come up, these days you can come up with just about any kind of design you can think of and laser cut it out and put it in the concrete and stuff, and it's just really nice. Any more questions?
No.
Well, I think it's a great project. I mean, bottom line is, how much can the port come up with, you know, 'cause we're always broke, but, you know?
You got a lot of company.
Yeah. But if we can...
There's grant money out there.
Yeah, I think, you know, with 100% grant opportunities, I think that we could do it. I am definitely supporting this, because we need the safety, again. Highway 300 is not good, and I think, you know, with, on my personal project that I'm trying to accomplish, having a place to go for people to exercise, recreate, be able to get down to the park without driving, I think it's critical.
Yeah.
For the health of this whole community.
Yeah, it's downright scary now.
Yeah. That's right.
It really is.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, item number six on our agenda is executive director's report. Larry, take it away.
Okay. Place station. Our place stationed at the North Shore in May, we did $2,317 in June, $1,230 in July, $2,658. And year-to-date, as of this afternoon, about 3 o'clock, $74.26. Plus, we've taken in $34.49 in cash for a year-to-date total of $10,875 by comparison prior to installing the pay machine in 2015. In 2014, we took in just over $600 total in launch fees. So, I think we've done well there. Procurement cards. As recommended in Schedule 22, we applied to US Bank for credit cards as per US Bank's contract with the State Department of Enterprise Services. These have a lower interest rate than we pay to our current provider, and we get an annual rebate on what we spend. I have the cards here for you. One for Judy, one for Scott, and I have already activated them for you, Judy.
Are you gonna remind us to bring them when we get a conference?
I can't, I can't do that. All you need to do is take the stickers off. However, we do need a resolution to approve your acceptance of them and designation of spending authority to use them, and that is on your agenda for approval. First aid certification, for all of our first aid certifications for CPR, AED, and basic first aid expired in June. We need to set up a class to renew these. I believe the Home Builders Association will be doing a class in September, but I don't know if there's anything locally any sooner than that. We actually had them done here last time, so...
There's local.
Yeah. If there was something before now, I'd like to get that organized. Bulk water sales rates. When we did the update to the water rates, we did not do an update to our rates for bulk water sales. While these are few and far between, we do offer them. I did some research on what other jurisdictions charge, and I put together recommended rates for the discussion item on your agenda. We're also going to order a meter for monitoring the amount of water a bulk user takes from our system. Right now, it's just a guest event. Criminalization of marina rules. As you know, in 2015, it's recommended by WPPA as best practice. You adopted a resolution concerning criminalization of our marina rules and sent them to the county commissioners for approval. However, the clerk of the board never put them on the commissioner's agenda for approval, which we recently discovered somewhat inadvertently. Commissioners wanted me to come and testify about why we want this. I met with the commissioners on July 17th to explain that, and they gave me a laundry list of tasks, including writing a legal justification for doing this, along with getting buy-in from sheriff and prosecutor, as well as writing the resolution for them to approve. I originally asked Rob Johnson about doing this, since he worked on these the first time, and he basically said he was leaving on vacation till August 14th, so he wasn't really interested in dealing with it. Then I called Joe Brogan, asked him to handle the legal parts of it, as well as deal with the prosecutor, since he worked with him on the Everhart matter and has an established relationship with him. Joe sent me a response saying, "We don't have the legal authority to criminalize this," which we already knew. County commissioners have to approve it as part of the county's municipal code. I called Joe to follow up, only to find out he's on vacation with his family this week. So, I called WPPA, 'cause that's where this came from originally, and Eric said he would check with Frank Chamelak, who's a person who brought this up in the first place at one of their seminars. I heard back from Eric this morning. He gave me the appropriate RCW, which I passed on to Joe in an email this afternoon. While I was waiting, I also reached out to the Port of Kingston, whose rules we used as a template to write and adopt ours. Executive director there told me that all we have to do is have someone deputized to make these enforceable, which is in essence what the RCW says. So, I'm just gonna wait to hear back from Joe and go from there. But this shouldn't be a big, big problem, once we, you know, everybody understands what the RCW says. Budget, I intend to begin working on 2018 budget in the next few weeks. My friend Mark Wilson, the executive director at the Port of Kalama, has shared his budgeting tools with me, and while that's a much larger port than we are, there are a number of things that are adaptable for us, like the way they have attached detailed costs to their comprehensive scheme projects. And while we're well within our budget for 2017, between this and moving to Biass, hopefully we can get an even tighter handle on our money. Biass software upgrade, while we're on subject to the budget, we've begun moving forward on the conversion to Biass. I spoke with them Friday. They sent us the contract this morning, which I signed and sent back to them. We'll begin receiving the paperwork we need to provide to them to get started. In fact, they sent me an email with it just right at 5 o'clock. What that will entail is us filling out spreadsheets and other documentation so they can begin setting us up. Once we're set up, we'll begin training. They're gonna have an initial training session on Wednesday between 1:00 and 2:00. I don't know if either of, any of you are interested in that.
Which Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
Day after tomorrow, yes.
We're out here?
Right here. It'll be like a webinar.
Yeah, I might be able to.
Okay. And I know Scott, you said you were interested in that, so I have to let her know.
Does it cost?
No. It's all part of, it's all part of.
How, how long is it?
An hour.
Yeah, I can be here.
Okay.
We'll have to advertise that, though.
Okay, yeah.
The two of us are gonna be here.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I can, 'cause there's Sherwin permit, so we're down in the county. I'll be down in the county, so it should be done by then, but I'm not sure.
Okay, well, Leanne, can you take care of that?
Sure.
Thank you. Once we're set up, we'll begin our training. Our actual conversion date will be January 1st, 2018, so we'll be in QuickBooks until the year's end. And then I just said what I need was your availability date for the training, so. Trail project, I received a call from Pat McCullough. You just heard the whole pitch, so I'm not gonna go on to any more about that. Inventory of assets, as you know, we've embarked upon putting together a complete inventory list of all the property and equipment we own. We're doing it in an Excel spreadsheet, so it can be easily updated. Welcome to Allen sign. We previously discussed having the port maintenance staff prepare the welcome to Allen sign at the northern end of Allen. What we found out is it's anchored by about three feet of concrete, and we'll need a machine to dig it out to fix it. Contacted Ron Griffey, and he said he'll do it, but we're gonna have to wait until he has a break and a big job that he's working on at Lakeland Village. Ribbon cutting. There will be a ribbon cutting ceremony on Thursday, August 17th to complete, to celebrate completion of the Highway 3 project. Will take place at 10:00 AM at Kitsap Bank. I will be there to represent the port, but I wanted to make you all aware...
You cut the ribbon?
No, I'm just representing the port. You know, the port was here, you know? But I wanna make you all aware in case any of you want to attend.
I'll probably be there, too.
Okay. Skateboard park, I met with representatives of the Beard's Cove Association on Monday, July 17th. It was primarily an information gathering mission from them, or for them. I heard from them again. They brought it to their board and said they'd like to explore moving forward. Met with them this afternoon, and we looked at three potential sites, one of which we all agreed was probably the most feasible site, at Santa Maria Park. Told them I'd pass this information on to you all and be back in touch. Candidates for commissioner, I would like to begin providing our meeting materials to the two candidates for the empty commissioner seat as a way of reducing their learning curve when it comes time for whichever one of them wins the election to take office. Since all this is public record anyway, I didn't think you all would have any heartburn about it, but I did wanna run it by you first.
That's good.
That's fine.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right. Water system issues, we're getting close to submission on this. We've provided Northwest Water System with just about everything they've asked for, but still need to put together some missing customer service policies and procedures for the system. Steve Holloway, our water system manager, talked to PUD Number One, and they said we could use theirs as a template. So, I intend to adapt what they have to fit our needs and have that completed this week. So, unless there's something we're not aware of, still lurking out there in the weeds, we should be ready to submit shortly. I'm looking forward to getting this off my plate. We still haven't heard anything about our water system franchise agreement with Mason County that's up for renewal this year, so I'm assuming we're in the September, October group. We don't have to do anything more than what we've already done at the moment. They'll send us information when we get closer. We've already obtained an updated evidence of coverage insurance form from Enduris, and the county will send us their required form when it's time, so we're good to go at the moment. gazebo bricks, the new bricks are in place, and we have commitments for around 50 of them, which is more than enough to pay the entire cost of the project. We have most of the payments in hand, and the others will be collected before the etching is done, which will happen the week of August 21st. We sold several at Allen Days, and everything we sell from this point forward is money we can put into reserves or use for something else. Running out the small office, we got this cleaned out pretty much, and Don is going to build a lockable closet into that alcove in the back of the room, and then we'll paint the entire room. This'll give us additional storage, which we're in desperate need of, as well as put our lockable file cabinet, where we put money, checks, and the like behind three locks, hoping to have that ready to go in the next seven to 10 days. It'll have a desk and a small conference table, as well as Wi-Fi and a generic computer with Microsoft Office on it. I've also shared this on our Facebook page and the Mason County Facebook groups, as well as with the Chamber and the EDC, letting all of them know that it'll be available at a cost of $25 an hour with a minimum of two hours, $75 for half-day, and $100 for all-day.
Any bites on it yet?
Actually, yes. We did have a couple, but I had to tell them we're not ready, and they wanted it like today, so. Public record software, while we continue in the holding pattern for this at the moment, I do have a lead on a potential vendor that may be able to help within our budget. More on this as it moves forward. Coder doo-doo classes, I'm hopeful to be able to focus on this again in time for the new school year. LTAC issues, the last LTAC meeting was July 27th, but I didn't attend, as that was my first day back in the office after vacation. Since we aren't going to be able to secure any direct funding for anything, and what was on the agenda was reviewing proposals for the visitor center marketing service, I felt catching up on things in the office was a higher priority. What took place was that the North Mason Chamber was awarded the visitor center contract, but with some modifications on the previous one, which includes somewhat less income, according to Stephanie Rowland, the Chamber executive director. Management contract was awarded to Rachel Hansen, who, according to her LinkedIn, Facebook profiles, is a local event coordinator for the Washington Aviation Association and graphic designer at the Mason, at the Shelton-Mason County Chamber of Commerce, and a graphic designer at Image in Action Design. County wanted someone with a local presence and the current holder of the contract, Blue Collar Agency, which is based in Hood River, Oregon, couldn't provide that, so it appears that Rachel won by default. Stephanie also expressed a desire to explore partnering with us to put together a series of classes for helping established local businesses take their companies to the next level. I told her we would definitely be interested in that. Power and water at the Allen Marina, I've completed the grant application and submitted it in time to qualify. Grant advisor made some comments, which we have addressed and requested additional information, which we have provided. We have until August 15th to complete this part of the process. We also need to develop a PowerPoint presentation and narrative for this as part of our in-person presentation. Working on that part of it. Should be ready by the time we receive notice of when our presentation date is. Also had lunch with Brimford Airport Commissioner Carrie Bozeman, who is a personal friend of... Also had lunch with Brimford and Port Commissioner Kerry Bozeman, who is a personal friend of mine, and we talked about this as well. He suggested applying for funds through the state capital budget and offered help in Olympia when the time came. So I contacted Tim Sheldon, Dan Griffey, and Drew McKeon, and asked for their help moving this forward, and all have sent me the paperwork for the capital budget and have promised to advocate for us. However, until the legislature approves the capital budget, which is disappointing, appears won't happen unless there is a fix for the Hearst issue, there's not much point in rushing to pursue this avenue, as a request wouldn't go into the 2017 capital budget, which is already set, but the 2018 version. Big grant requires a 25% match, which is a little over $101,000, but part of that can be in-kind, including our own labor and materials. I don't know about the capital budget requirements. I spoke with Don about running the water line down there. We need a larger line to service that many boats, and he can do that. His time and the materials would all count against the in-kind. We could fund any balance of the match with a combination of a loan from the IDD, a general obligation bond, or possibly out of our capital budget, but we cross that bridge and we get there. While our RCO grant advisor doesn't hold that much hope for success, as we are competing nationally for what is a relatively small pool of money, I'm still optimistic. At the recent WPPA broadband summit, I was approached by Guy Glenn, the executive director in Owaco, who I've become friends with. He's on the RCO review committee, said he was part of the team who reviewed our application. He said he thought we had a chance of moving forward, because there are only four applicants from Washington. But either way, if nothing else, we can also use all this information to apply for a tier one grant in the 2018 RCO cycle. Broadband summit, I attended the WPPA broadband summit last week, and one of the discussion topics was ports as the last mile retail provider. Coincidentally, at Allen Days, PUD III Commissioner Tom Farmer talked with me about the PUD's intention to significantly expand its broadband footprint, and at the administrator's breakfast last Friday, Joel Meyer talked about that as well. After the meeting, I talked to Joel and told him we'd be interested in taking a look at that, since you all had indicated a willingness to explore this a year or so ago. Told me he would pass it on to Justin Holdgrove, who's the person in charge of that initiative. We worked with Justin previously on the lighting upgrades we did at the North Shore, so I've already got an established relationship with him. Some more on that as it develops. WPPA meeting dates, the WPPA environmental seminar is taking place September 21 and 22 in Vancouver. A potential interest to us are sessions on waterfront redevelopment, improving communities, sustainable and economic development. Communities remain supportive of efforts to repurpose waterfront property away from the legacy industrial uses. Cases in Winachi, Vancouver, and Bellingham allow us to consider these three different approaches to meeting community needs. Show me something cool, five-minute presentations from each port. How changing federal policies and priorities may affect ports. What happens in Washington, DC ends up here. Presentation will focus on federal policy-making context, and most likely changes to environmental regulation that affect the work of ports. Wanted to make you aware of this, in case you want to attend or have me attend. Other events are the Small Port Seminar, October 25th, 27th, in Leavenworth. Registration opens this month, so I wanted to see who was planning on attending, so we can make hotel reservations before they're booked up. And the annual meeting is in September, or is in November 15th, 17th, in Seattle. And that concludes my report, other than who wants to go to the Small Port Seminar.
I would plan on attending the Small Ports, but probably not the other two.
I think the, that environmental one, I, that water redevelopment, I think I'd like to go to that one.
Okay.
With the oyster house, you know, and all the stuff that we're trying to do.
I thought about that as well.
I think that's really important, that we go.
And I didn't know if you all would want me to go for the economic development part of it or not.
Sure.
I think so.
Okay. So, that's my report.
All right. Thanks, Larry. Back to the agenda here. Travis?
Travis isn't here.
Saw he, yeah.
In his report, he told me he wasn't going to be here as a family commitment, but he said there was really nothing to report, that there was, even through July 4th, there wasn't any problem.
Okay.
I'm, that's not really, yeah.
We had something for old business.
I don't know if this is really old business. Well, yeah, remember the beautification signs that we agreed to help?
Right.
I got an email from Brian saying that the verbiage on Port Public Dock was too long, they need something shorter. So he wanted to know if you could shorten those, if you could get hold of you.
I had a text conversation with Brian about this yesterday.
Okay.
And he's out of town right now, but I told him that, he had also approached Scott about it, and Scott told me to handle it, and I told Brian I would take care of it.
Okay, good. All righty, good.
Is there anything that, in his recommendation, that?
Just to make it like Public Dock, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I just.
Which would be fine.
Well, I'd like to have our name on it.
Well, true.
What he's trying to say is there wasn't enough room to put Port of Allen Public Dock or whatever. So, you know, I thought maybe we could short it up to Port of Allen Launch/Marina, or something like that.
Well, let me, you want me to go and look at it? Or, I mean, well, you can look at it.
Yeah.
You can talk to him, right?
Yeah.
Well, just go ahead and get her done.
Brand us.
Okay.
All right. Under new business, we have the brick engraving.
I think we pretty much covered that week of August 21st. Leanne's been handling all that, so I'll just.
If anybody is interested in the bricks, we'll need everything by Friday, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I bought one, so I guess I'm.
Does everybody, Jeff, you know what we're talking about? Engraving bricks?
Yeah.
Okay. Want to go again?
So we have a resolution 382, 383, 384, 385. We, I've read the resolutions, and it's a matter of getting those written to the record and approving them.
I guess we should go through each one to vote on, huh?
I agree.
Oh, here we go. Okay.
Are they in order? 382?
They are. So, I'm going to read Resolution 382. All of them start with be resolved by the commissioners of the Port of Allen as follows. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Port of Allen has met and considered an update in its banking information, now therefore be it resolved at the Board of Commissioners after duly considering all relevant evidence and testimony presented, hereby resolves to officially delete former Port Commissioner Jean Farmer as a signatory from any and all of its banking and financial documents and instruments effective from the date of her resignation from the Port of Allen Commission, which was July 11th, 2017. So I move that we accept this Resolution 382.
Have a.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution #382. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay. And Resolution 383. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Port of Allen has met and considered, excuse me, an update to its policies concerning the storage and retention of original and otherwise important documents. Now therefore be it resolved at the Board of Commissioners, after duly considering all relevant evidence and testimony presented, hereby resolves to obtain a safe deposit box at a local bank branch in which to store all its original source documents concerning the port, its charter, land, and property acquisitions, as well as other important documents. So I move that we accept Resolution 383.
I think that's a good idea. I'll second that.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution 383. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Resolution 384. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Port of Allen has met and considered an update to its banking information. Now therefore be it resolved at the Board of Commissioners, after duly considering all relevant evidence and testimony presented, hereby resolves to officially add Port Commissioner Scott Cooper as a signatory on any and all of his banking and financial documents and instruments effective immediately. I move that we accept Resolution 384.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 384. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay. And Resolution 385. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Port of Allen has met and considered the use of additional credit cards by port personnel. Now therefore be it resolved at the Board of Commissioners, after duly considering all relevant evidence and testimony presented, hereby resolves to officially authorize the use of credit cards issued to the Port of Allen by US Bank in accordance with the agreement between the State of Washington Department of Enterprise Services and US Bank to the following individuals with the following spending limits. Commissioner Scott Cooper, $1,000. Commissioner Judy Scott, $1,000. Executive Director Larry Coppola, $5,000. Operation managers, Leanne, Dennis, $1,000. I move that we accept Resolution 385.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution 385. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we are on to new business, policy discussion regarding Frank Schmelick's WPPA.
It's Schmelick, actually.
Schmelick, yeah. Schmelick's WPPA presentation. Do we have that on a projection or slide, or?
She made some copies of it.
Yeah.
Okay. And you had, you have that in your document, your meeting document.
Share, maybe? Yeah, we can share.
I've got it in here.
I don't know if this has it here. I'm not finding it. I doubt it, too.
So at the director's seminar, as well as the commissioner's seminar, Frank Schmelick, the WPPA port attorney, and he's also an attorney for many other port districts and fire districts, because he likes to make fun of fire departments at port district meetings and ports at fire district meetings. So Larry, what was your thought here? Just kind of go through it and?
Yeah, just, I mean, it's brief. But, you know, the discussion you and I had, we were both right.
Oh, right, yeah. So I sat through this. Judy sat through it. Larry got it at the directors. One of the things that I thought was interesting was that the, the attorney, just, he had some opinions that, that were, I think, hard to validate. I mean, that, that kind of the environment of public meetings has become increasingly controversial, and he's not sure why, but that these public meetings are, you know, that there's going to be somebody coming in from the community that's going to shake the tree, for a better word.
It has some flaws.
Yeah.
If you'd like to read the history of, you know, like King County, some of their districts and stuff. That's about 1,000 places.
Yeah, city council.
And you've got to remember Frank's home territory is Bellingham.
Right. Yeah. Okay, all right. I forgot about that.
And I don't think it's as much of a problem for us as it is for other districts. The Port of Seattle and the Port of Olympia go through this fairly regularly, as well as Port of Bellingham.
So did you want to go through some of these slides, or just highlight some of what's going on?
I just thought maybe we could have a discussion regarding some of the, some of the parts that he came up with.
Well, I have to say, I've been really impressed, I think, even just all my years, and you've been there, too, Dallas, some of the things that we've gone through. Keeping size of the room does make a difference. You know, they talked about that a little bit, making sure that everybody's not too cramped. But we had, we've had a few times when it was pretty tight in here and lots of, lots of fun. We were pretty popular a few times. But I think keeping it polite, engaged, respectful, I think that's one thing that I've been really encouraged about this community, and that is one of the, one of the things that he said is making sure that the community is polite and use it that kind, that way. Make sure everybody knows, we do treat each other with respect and courtesy. So that was one thing that I thought was really important. Valuing other people's opinion. You know, we are tasked to do, make those hard decisions. I think that was the other thing.
Yeah, just to know that there's differing point of views, and we'll listen to both sides, and our minds not made up when we come in beginning. Some of the things that he's, he recommended, we're already doing. Videotaping your meetings is a good idea. Having a podium is a good idea. He recommended having people line up to the podium. I don't know how necessary that is. If you're the Port of Seattle and you're going to add a third runway, it might be necessary to have people line up, but for the Port of Allen, with our limited exposure to projects that are controversial, then I don't know. We have, we have done some of the things that he's recommended. What Commissioner Scott had said is, is we should have a set of rules that not only do we abide by, but we would expect the community, the speakers, to abide by, and no personal attacks, which, you know, that might be a hard one sometimes, if it's a very controversial subject and people are involved in it. And this we know, but it's, public comment period is not public debate time, so we try not to engage during public comment. Try, being the word there. It's not good to debate somebody on a controversial subject in a one-hour meeting where you have other things going on. He recommends getting a bell. I don't think we're there yet.
Gone.
So what he says here is kind of, you know, along the same lines of what I was saying. If one commissioner engages one speaker, then all other speakers will demand similar accommodation. So that makes sense to me. He does say expect a bit of street theater example, walking out with backs turned.
We've had that a few times.
And the reality is that, you know, for us to make valid, informed decisions, we want competing interests. I mean, we want to hear both sides, or multiple sides.
I think one thing that has really, going to these seminars all the time, matter of fact, is so helpful, is learning, learning that, you know, it's just like a family and a community, is that you're not always going to agree, but you learn how to live, live together. And I think that's one thing that I've really appreciated about this commission, is just learning to respect one another's opinions and, and then moving forward with what is the best for the whole community. And I do appreciate everybody here. I really appreciate you taking time to come here and share your opinions, and even though it may be long. No, just kidding. No, really do.
He says, no, you care.
Yeah, that you do care. So, anyway.
All right. Well, nothing else on the WPPA presentation. We could move on to rescheduling our September meeting, because the holiday is on the 4th. And I'm going to throw a big wrench into all of it.
You are.
Because.
I did schedule it to the 6th already.
Well, the 6th, I'll be out of town. So, and that's what I said, was I don't have to be here. But, that being said, I will be in town until about 1:00 or 2:00 on the 4th. I would not expect anyone to come in on the holiday, but I will. I would not expect anyone to come in on the holiday, but I will be in town until two or three.
So the fourth is the Monday, right?
That's the holiday.
Yeah, that's Labor Day.
That's the holiday. So I don't even know if it's, um.
Should we do it on the first?
I mean, I am here on the first. I don't know if it makes sense to have it on the first. And I'm talking about an hour-long consent agenda items and then maybe we could have a workshop later in the month.
Is that going to give you enough time to do everything?
Oh, yeah.
It's all done by the first.
Are you guys going somewhere on the fourth? Are you guys going somewhere, Labor Day?
I don't think I am.
Yeah?
It's just not.
You are?
Yeah.
You're going somewhere?
What day is the first?
It's Friday.
Friday, oh.
Well, we're not leaving until Saturday.
Well, I'm pretty flexible.
Okay, so.
Whatever you guys, whatever you, you guys want.
We might have to do a little bit of research about, um, I know that if the regular meeting falls on a holiday, you can move it to the next following day and still call it the regular meeting, but if you're going to have it before or after, you have to call it a special meeting.
Do we want to still have the meeting on the sixth?
I don't know.
And have you call in?
No, I don't know if there would be a meeting to have it on the sixth.
Just do consent items on the Friday before.
And then we could, today, we could schedule a workshop for later in the month. Does that sound good?
It sounds good.
So you want it on the first?
Friday, the first?
That's fine.
The general rule.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock?
Yes, that's fine.
And I know I'll be working till six, because that'll be my last day for two weeks.
Actually, I could say that.
Well, you could.
I'll make a motion that we change our September, the fourth meeting. To September 1st, Friday, 6:00 P.M.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to change our regular meeting for September from the Fourth of September to the first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Do we want to schedule a workshop?
Coming right up on budgeting.
Yeah. Call it a budget workshop.
Yeah. When are you back?
I will be back, back to full capacity, working on the 18th. I will be on a full two weeks.
Well, I think the 18th would be fine. Not on a Thursday.
That Thursday, the 21st, there's an ADC event is going to be here at the gazebo membership event.
Oh, is there?
Yes.
There's also an ADC group.
Back the 18th, Monday, the 18th.
That works.
Monday, the 18th, we find, maybe.
Okay, great.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
We don't need a motion for that. That's a workshop. We're going to call that budget.
Budget workshop.
Maybe we could talk a little bit about the trail project as well, because.
That's what I was thinking. That and the skateboard project.
Yes.
So what, how long, what is the time for that ADC meeting on the 21st?
Oh, it's like four o'clock in the afternoon or something.
Okay. Sure.
I'll take one, too. Even though I'm on the, all right. We are ready for, oh, you got something?
Well, I just wanted to talk about the PRTPO.
Oh, sure.
You know, I got a message from Debbie Clemmons, the Secretary. There, the PRTPO has monies, $83,000, that goes towards what we call unfunded projects, program. It's unfunded program. Most of that money is spent for studies, feasibility studies, documentation about transportation issues, and they only spent $44,000. And it was, all projects, it was actually spent, but they didn't get it done in time, so we have to give the money back. So I'm, I'm thinking, you know, the port could apply for some of these things. Even with this trail project, we could apply for some of those things. It might be a little late now, but nevertheless, we could, because it does, again, do studies. We would probably have to work with Public Works, because they can implement those studies, whereas we don't have the capacity, but we could be a lead for it. So I just wanted to keep that on the radar, and if there's something that we can do to apply, we should.
Can we direct Larry to find out if we can apply?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you.
I'll need contact information from somebody, but, you know, I'm happy to do that.
The new one is for 18, because 17 already got spent. But, you know, I think it's September is when you reapply, or August, or Sep. I'll find out.
Find out, let me know.
Okay. So anyway, that's all I have on that.
Great. We're going to move into the public comment section. Go ahead and step up to the podium if you'd like to make a comment.
Jeff Carey. Just a couple of things. One's kind of like a broken record. Remember, TICCAP, Transportation Improvement Committee for Mason County Roads, is beginning to review its six and one-year projects. So if there are things in the port district that, you know, either from the standpoint of safety or standpoint of new roads or repairing of roads, we'd like, you know, we'd like to hear, you know, if the port has, you know, any particular thing that way. My understanding is that TICCAP will be having public hearings in the North End, I should say hearing, to take public comment and to inform them what, you know, what's going on with the county road system, what projects are coming ahead, what maintenance projects are coming and what have you, but I do not know what dates. I do know it'll be sometime early next year, but don't know dates. We're going to try to have one in each of the three county commissioner districts, so. Along that line, too, I haven't heard anything about it, but other than since I mentioned the last meeting is, but supposedly the county is working, going to begin working on that circulation plan for new roads within the UGA of, or UGA of Belfair. So I haven't seen anything come through that.
May I add something, Jeff, to that? Because I just got information, is Thera Black, I think, is her name?
Yeah, sure.
We're going to, she's going to come to the North Mason Community Voice Meeting.
Super.
And that will be August 27th. So invite everybody to come.
They've started.
Yes.
Then that's your clue, they've started. But what I'm also saying is from the ports.
Yeah, oh, it's, I'm sorry, it's Monday. Must be the 28th. Sorry, 28th. Thank you.
Anyway, the, the other part, the other thing is that the, the port has mentioned they want to be involved with those types of projects and this is, I'm just reminding, I realize you've got more than, you know, more things to do than you got time to do, but, you know, at least, you know, put your finger up and at least, you know, get in the middle of it a little bit. Because there's both the stakeholders, as well as the, you know, the economic issue, you know, with the Port of Allen, so. And then a final thing, as far as the, first of all, I don't know much yet about the Northshore Trail and, you know, Northshore Belfair, all that. Biggest thing, and you've heard it from me before, is, you know, when we're looking at Theller and the Water Wheel Park and all that, it's not so much for or against the projects. Each one of the projects are good. The issue is, always from my standpoint, is how, you know, we get the money to begin with and move it forward, but how do we support it over the long term? Because what I've seen in this county, in all different areas, whether it's cemetery or water districts, doesn't matter what it is, we seem to be able to get everybody together to get it to happen, good, bad, or different, but then where we really break down is being able to keep it up, you know, keep, you know, the maintenance up and the support and budget for those kind of things and have the revenues to take care of what we have. We have the same discussion in TICCAP, is that, you know, the county wants to maybe divide monies a little differently, but there's, there's all these roads, there's 620 miles of roads in the, in the county that need, you know, always, you know, you've got to keep up on, and, you know, there isn't, there isn't, you know, a road that hasn't been, as I always say, there isn't a road around here that hasn't been built at least in the last 100 years, meaning statistically, you're going to revisit every road for sure every 100 years, minimum, and that costs. And so likewise with the parks and trails, I just, you know, whatever you get going into it, I mean, and I don't know the numbers, I don't, I don't have any, you know, idea to scopes and different, how funding's going to happen or anything, but at the same time, keep, you know, in the back of your mind that, okay, great, how are we going to keep it going after we're through and, you know, out of the picture? So, anyway, that's it.
Thanks, Jeff.
One thing, Jeff, I just want to let you know that the majority of that land are private, I mean, are Fish and Wildlife or Great Peninsula, so the majority of that may be maintained by those people. But that is a good point.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I don't care if there's 100, you know, 100 different agencies, entities and what have you, that each have their responsibility, just make sure it's.
That's right.
There's some contingency for it. In other words, and things happen. We've seen, you know, we've seen what happens to discontents like with Theller. And we don't need another, another one of those fiascos in this community. We just, we need to be able to, if we're going to put something together, put it together and then, you know, keep it up. It's like a house. You got to, got to paint it. You got to do the plumbing every 30, 40 years. You got to, you know, relook at things and, you know, things just don't last forever around here. Anyway, thank you much.
Thank you. Michael?
Hello, my name is Michael Sutroth and I live at Trails in Lake. And I am talking, I know it's maybe a little premature, but in favor of the recommendation that Pat McCullough presented today. I'm a teacher in the North Mason School District and do now subbing at both Sand Hill Elementary and Belfair Elementary, but I've been at all four schools. The students at Sand Hill don't commonly go to Theller, because they have no access to it if their parents aren't willing to drive them there. There's no safe way to get there. I took kids last year and the year before that who were involved in the Environmental Science Club at Sand Hill, and it was their first time ever at Theller slash the Salmon Center. I think having a safe connection would enhance those kids' abilities to utilize premier asset, again, of the Belfair area, the Theller and Salmon Center Trail Network. And it would make it a much fairer situation where the kids in Belfair generally have an easier time accessing that facility or those trails. So I like that a lot. Looking at the health indices of Mason County, we know we don't rank really highly on them. Asthma's bad, other things are not so good in public health, so any time to get kids out exercising, I'm all for that. It helps them in many ways. And the Trust for Public Lands, which is a private nonprofit, really wants to encourage minority populations to have more access to trails and other facilities. That could be another funding source, potentially. So there are those private organizations which I think would look favorably. They looked favorably at some of the other parks that the county has developed in the last several years. They've been crucial to finding the upfront cost and then getting the public entities to reimburse them. I was a member of the Mason County Trails and Parks Advisory Commission for a couple of years, and I know that they have come through for us. So that's just another thought at how we could possibly get the upfront money. And while $5 million looks challenging in the state legislative capital budget, it isn't the biggest project that they've funded, and I think we could have a solid argument for why we might get the state to fund part of that as well. But as was mentioned, a lot of those project, a lot of those properties are already amenable to having that trail system, and it would just enhance safety, it would enhance health, and I'd like to speak in favor of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Any other public comment? If you need good to the order. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Yes, they're right.
That's the other resolution.
No, but I know you.